Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our board business meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everybody's having a nice summer as it's coming to an end. Unfortunately.
Right?
Yeah. Additions, deletions? I have, I have one. Like to make a motion to delete action item number one.
Support.
And it was, I got a, a, I was communication from the attorney that that item was not quite ready for tonight, so it'll be on our next meeting. Other questions on that?
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, any others?
I would like to motion to add a discussion item around possibly putting a resolution forward around looking into making our bridges fixed as opposed to swinging. Yeah, I tried to reach out to you about it today, Jim, but I know I couldn't get in touch with you, so. I know it's a long process, we'd have to.
Second.
We'd have to go to the federal government to talk about it, but, you know, I don't expect to do anything today, but I just want to discuss the possibility of it and see if we can get a resolution for it at some point around that.
So he had a second to add it to the agenda?
Yep. Anybody, any other comments on it?
I have a question. Kyle, your, your intent is to petition the federal government and the Army Corps of Engineers to make our bridges no longer swinging bridges?
Exactly, yeah, or one of them at least. Yeah. Looking to the possibility of having at least one of them be fixed instead of swinging.
Guess I'm willing to talk about it.
Yeah.
Can't hurt, might help.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's all about the waterway, that's, that's the tough nut, but you're right, it's the federal government that's, is, you know, going to have to change that. Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Was that Mr. Jaeger that seconded?
Yes, it was. Okay, so we have action item, or discussion. Discussion. Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, do, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, just for clarification, we deleted action item number one and we added a discussion item concerning the bridges fixed versus swinging. No presentations, so next would be public comment on our agenda items. Do we have anybody? Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Heil, I live on East River Road. The idea to postpone item number one is something I'd like to commend. I think that greater clarity of description of the way the process to the decision was organized and how they made it, the recommendation, what comparisons were made, is of value. We need to understand what kind of thought went into it, not just here it is, we thought it was good. And I think that that kind of technique in any decision that the board makes is commendable, because in that transparency, it builds confidence, and in certain times now, we would probably be hoping for more confidence than we're getting. And so I'm thankful for that. And that's my comment for there, I still have a little bit of time. I think the idea of considering a fixed bridge has a certain element of merit to it. But at the same time, we're sitting here right now just trying to talk about these other issues, and I'm wondering exactly how much bridge should we chew and what about our other priorities? Would be, at this moment in time, be overloading the public with our development of that thought. I think we should, you know, look at it and see what can happen. But the issues of fixing the toll bridge if we buy it and, and everything else that's going on with it is necessary at lower cost and necessary to get the job done now. We can look at it, but I think that we're overloading ourselves on that issue with all of that at once. I'm not against it, I'm talking about the timing and what the priorities are. Thank you.
Well, yeah, oh, thank you, Bill.
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Bill.
Did you have something you wanted?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Anyone else on agenda items? Okay, with that, move on to consent agenda.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda 24-050, which consists of minutes of the August 26th, 26th, 2024 regular meeting. Check registers dated through August 30th, 2024. The 2024 winter tax levy and update 2011 Grozeal Police Department jail live scan equipment.
Support. Any comments on the consent agenda?
Uh, yeah, I was just looking at our 2024 tax rate request. Dave, could you just summarize what the total, total winter levy will be versus what the maximum rate would be? I don't know if you have that handy. It looks like we're doing 12.8313 mils, but I was trying to figure out what the total possible levy was to see how under it we are.
These are the, the millages that are being assessed are the voted millages with all the reductions, whether it's for Prop A or, you know, the Headley reduction.
The only, the only millage that I'm aware of that is, that we're levying less than what we can is the library.
Okay.
That's the only one I can think of that we've adjusted. Uh, the rest of them, the adjustment is from the Henley, Headley adjustment.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
Yeah. And it was, the levy for the library was, I believe, .4 and we're levying .3 adjusted by Headley.
Okay. I mean, 12.83 mils is still less than every year prior, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was, and that was on the summer levy that went down three.
Oh, okay, all right.
You're right, the total levy this year is less than it's been in a long time, and it'll go up next year, but, but this year it's been less.
Other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, our consent agenda passes. Brings us to our action items. Action item number one on the contract, the AT&amp;T contract was deleted. So that leaves us with action item number two, David.
Thank you. Based on the recommendation of the Grozeal Airport Commerce Park Commission, the Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the extension of the landscaping plan contract dated November 3rd, 2022 with Vanstone slash O'Brien, Inc. The extension has been updated as of July 30th, 2024 in the amount of $59,351. And I'm adding one more sentence to that that says, "Final location to be determined pending our engineering study."
Support.
Okay, my first thing would be, that sentence wouldn't make sense based on the rest. You're, you're extending it because what they're building is a sign.
You're right.
What they're building is a sign, the location. Say something that the sign is going to be located or something, because final location doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, the, the location of this particular sign will be on the south side of Groh. Somewhere around where the EPA building is, right near Groh. But there's some questions on if it's 100 yards this way or 100 yards the other way. So that'll, that's based on the final engineering input that Rains is doing now.
The location of the sign will be on the south side of Groh in the vicinity of the EPA building.
Yeah, wouldn't it be just west of Meridian then, Dave, would that do it?
Yes.
So it'd be on Groh Road, west, just west of Meridian?
On Groh, it will be on Groh.
South side of Groh.
Facing Groh.
South side of Groh, just west of Meridian, Jameson, if that helps.
So, okay, yeah, you can help me with the wording when we get to that. All right, so, and the sign is gonna, I, the sign's gonna say what?
The sign will say Grozeal Airport. It'll look just like, except for the lettering. The signs for Commerce Park that's right across the street from Township Hall. The masonry, masonry signs is Commerce Park, it's backlit. It's beige in color, so it'll.
It'll match.
It'll match the signage that's already there.
All right. That'll be nice, that'll be a nice addition, if we can find the location. Other comments or questions about this action item?
And just so they know, Jim, it's all from airport funds, not the.
Yeah, and it was, it was, it's in the current year's budget.
Yeah, from the airport, not the.
From the airport.
Township, yeah.
Anything else?
That was my question, and for the public to know, airport funds are, there's no, there's no millage on that, that's all through the airport's own money, so, good to know.
Yeah, when a department does something, it comes out of theirs, it doesn't come out of the, out of township. All right, any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Seeing none. We have a motion based upon the recommendation of the Grozeal Airport Commerce Park Commission that the Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the extension of the landscaping plan contract dated November 3rd, 2022 with Vanstone O'Brien, Inc. The extension has been updated as of July 30th, 2024 in the amount of $59,351. And David, what's that last sentence you're adding?
The location of the sign will be on Groh Road in the vicinity of the EPA building.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have a, a sign in the future. And David, I believe you're also number, the next action item.
I'd like to make a motion that the Grozeal Township Board hereby authorizes a new hire to a full-time position of airport coordinator slash DPS secretary.
Second.
You?
The budgeted position. As you can see in the history, our water clerk will be retiring within the next year and a half, I believe, right, Derek?
Closer to a year.
Closer to a year, okay. So this will be a pre-hire for that position and will also take on some of the airport secretary, part-time employee that's currently being done by finance department employees, employee and the part-time, part-time position that's currently in the airport. It's a union position, full-time. And our applicant was a unanimous recommendation by the interviewers of, that consisted of the airport manager, township manager, water clerk, and current finance department employee that was performing the airport work. And she's scheduled to start tomorrow. November, November, I can't read it.
And Dave, what's, who is this person?
Her name is Karen Karp, K-A-R-P.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, it's pending the usual pre-employment checks. Our date will be November 4th.
Comments, questions?
Those are two pretty different, at least looking from the top down, two very separate departments, DPS and the airport. Is it, do you have any concerns about someone kind of working in both those departments?
Uh, no, the job responsibilities, although they're separate departments, are fairly similar. We use a software system called BSNA, and our water system, water billing is performed through BSNA. The airport's finances are performed through BSNA, so it's a lot of account management, payables, billables, or billing, so very similar responsibilities and tasks.
So it's almost like a BSNA systems analyst instead of like two department titles, I guess?
Yeah, you could say that.
The cost of employment is shared between the two departments.
Right. It's just a lot, a lot of the responsibilities of both positions are account management. So whether it's a water account or a tenant account, business account, very similar responsibilities because of that shared aspect to the, to those, you know, those departments and what they do and the position and what they do.
Okay.
And historically speaking, we've done that before. We have someone in the finance department who shared duties with the airport for a considerable amount of time, and again, it was the duties that were similar and doing similar duties within two different departments. And I think that we did that like maybe 10, over 10 years ago when we were trying to bring down the size of the staff, bless you.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson has been doing the airport coordinator job in the finance department, and it's gotten to the point where the department has grown enough and the business account number has grown enough where, you know, those responsibilities need to be taken off of Ms. Johnson's workload. So this person will absorb those duties, and then we have Ms. Deppa who, you know, has a date eventually here that she's going to be looking to retire, so we want to pre-train that individual to be able to work in that position, so.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion that the Grozeal Township Board hereby authorizes a hire to a full-time position of airport coordinator slash DPS secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Derek and Janelle, you have your young lady and Ms. Karp. Welcome aboard, we'll see you in November. All right, that's the end of our action items, we're back to public comment on any, any topic. Three minutes. Yes, sir. Sir, you have, it's not a question, it's comments. Come to the, come to the podium, please. Name and address and make your comment.
My name is Dennis Munzer, 9250 Byer, Maryland.
Yes, sir.
About three months ago, the, the dust proved the road behind us thoroughfare.
Yep.
Very well. They done a half, well, they didn't even do it, start the, our road, they did not even start it. They told the supervisor they done it, they did not do it. The supervisor was supposed to drive down Byermere to see that it was not done. I called him last month, a month and a half ago, I called him.
And you called me about a week ago.
A week ago, and I was never, I replied to my, you know, phone call. And I would like to know when it's going to be done or if it's going to be done, if you refuse to do it or what, I don't know.
Okay, and Derek, I'm going to let you talk, because we talked about it, we gave you an answer, but Derek, if you could address that.
Yeah, we did check with our field crew that follows along with the dust application company. Our field crew stated, and, and we have no reason to not trust them, they've been doing this for 25 years, that the application was completed on that road, and the second application, because they actually had extra product, went down the middle of the road, so I think what you.
Oh, just the middle.
Right.
They never completed the job.
On the second application was just the middle. There was a first application that was a full width. So what you saw, or I believe what you saw, on the second application was just the center, so, right. So that road was, did have dust control that was applied, that was the final application for, for this year, so they won't be making an additional application.
Done half the road, they only went down maybe halfway.
Uh huh.
And then he stopped. And then we went down through, to thoroughfare.
Yeah, uh huh.
They did not complete Byermere whatsoever.
Okay.
At one time this year.
I guess we'll have to agree to disagree. We did do an application on there full width, and if there was a short application, it was because we had a remaining product and we actually made another application after the initial application. That might have not have covered the entire road, but that was a second application on the same date or the day after with the additional material that we had.
I have witnessed, my neighbor, he, he'll even say that it was not done.
Okay, I, I guess it's what you saw and what we did, so I mean, that's, I guess a difference that we have. Okay? Thank you.
As long as you're not going to respond to that. Okay, thank you. Other comments or question, uh, not questions, other comments?
I do have a comment, yes, I am the neighbor and I am witness.
Okay, sir, sir, name, name and.
Alfred Twardzik, 9218 Byermar Lane.
And please, yeah, stay by the mic and talk into the mic.
Uh, I am a retired police lieutenant in the, in the area, and I'm very well-versed on what I know and what I see. I was there that day, they did the road. There was a township truck that was in front of the sprayer. They went down the center of Byermar. They didn't do Dahlia at all, and they didn't do the other street to the east of Dahlia. Can't remember the name of the street, but the Finger Street that comes off just before Thoroughfare. So, I'm sorry that maybe this company's telling you one thing, but that did not happen at all. I've lived here since 2018, I'm, nobody's here to pull any wool over anyone's eyes or give you any BS, that's, that's the last thing we want. We just wanted to let you know that it was not done, and whoever's telling you that is misleading you.
So, as you had mentioned, we do have a truck, a township employee that follows along with that truck every, at every street that an application is made. So it's not, we don't rely on the company to tell us that they did it, we rely on our staff to tell us that we did it. And we did check with our staff and they said it was applied, and actually applied twice on that same application. So what you may have seen, and I'm not, I'm not saying that you didn't see what you saw, but you might have seen the second application where they did not do the full street, they only did the middle of the street. They had applied it previous to that, full width. I'm not, I'm not aware of Dahlia.
They never even went down Dahlia, so if you're saying that, then.
I'm not aware of Dahlia, that's the first that that's come to my attention. I'll look into that for you folks.
I'll tell you what, though, sir, they did spray the heck out of the two streets on the other side of Meridian going towards the river. Those were extremely oversprayed. Driving through there, it was like, it was puddles of that stuff in, in the dips in the road.
Yeah, and we have no reason to say we didn't spray, or we sprayed it when we didn't spray it. Like, like I said, there was a second application, because actually we had more material on the truck, so rather than truck it off the island, they actually over-applied it, not unsafely or anything like that.
Well, I'm sure they over-applied it, but they over-applied it on the other side of Meridian, because they sure didn't do it on our side, so.
We're looking at Dahlia for you.
Dahlia and the, and the other street to the east that runs the same way as Dahlia.
We'll take a look at that, that's the first I've heard of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Jim, can I just ask the date of this, is there a date, I just wanted.
Oh, when did we do the?
What this gentleman?
Our first application, I believe, is the third week in May, and our second application, I think, is in the third week, right around the third week of July, I don't know the exact date off the top of my head, but.
Is there any way to like check? It's like when we do, you know, when we do all the dirt roads at one time.
Yeah, I just wondered the dates that they were talking about, that's all.
I'm just wondering if maybe the, I mean, obviously I don't think the township employees are BSing you or anything, but maybe the application was insufficient or something, I don't know if there's any way to check. It's kind of late in the season now.
Yeah, and the problem, if it was easy as just saying, hey, if there's an issue there with dust, we'll go and reapply, but this comes over in a tanker truck, I mean, there's, you can't spot apply this, it comes, when they do it, it's got to be the entire island, so. But, you know, in the future, we will definitely make sure that the residents in that area, if they had a concern last time, they're aware that we're doing it on a given day and they can come out and watch the application if they want, but, so.
Yeah, yeah, then, I, yeah, I don't know if there's any way we can, that we could go there and check to say whether it was done or not, if there's any way of showing that, but I.
We've been doing dust application for 15 years at least.
At least.
And we always have a staff member that drives the entire route with the truck, and the same applicator's been doing this for us, with the exception during the bridge closure.
It was the only, or the bridge closure was the only change in that, I mean, I.
Probably a good 10 years, the same vendor, so they're pretty familiar with the road network. But, you know, we'll make sure that any of the concerns that have come up, that, you know, they're a, you know, addressed with making sure not only that it's done, but also that the residents' concerns, that it, you know, that they're aware of when it's done next time, so they can get out there and look at it, so.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we certainly don't want our people on the dirt roads to be unhappy about, about the applications, because we've had very, very good luck with this product and certainly we want to make sure they're done.
Kathy has her hand up.
Kathy, what?
Uh, if you, yeah, sure, come on up. How are you, Kathy?
How are you guys? 26051 Thorpe Court, I don't live in a dirt road, but.
How are you guys? 26051 Thorpe Court. I don't live in a dirt road, but I just was thinking, maybe if they had a camera, you know how, remember they said they were doing, fixing the bridge all those years and they were filling out the form and, you know, maybe if you had a camera following them, could happen that they missed it. And they thought they did it. But a camera would tell you. You know how they have cameras now everywhere? I know I have them in my backyard when I see the coyotes. So, but I just thought I'd suggest that.
Thank you, Kath. Other comments? Margaret, how are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you?
Okay.
This is a quick one. I just want to say, remind everybody that the tiles that are being created for the, what is it, Lyons Park?
The glass wall.
Yep. They're still creating those. So I think we need to get the word out there because I don't think they have as many as they'd like. And I know they're going to be doing them in school. But it's a fun little project. I did it the last time I went to the farmer's market. And, you know, I don't know how many people watch, you know, the board, but it's a good one. So every Saturday until, I think, the end of October? Is that when? I think the farmer's market runs till the end of October?
The farmer's market. Yeah. They, and actually, they'll be doing it at every event.
Oh, at every event. Okay, even better. So, but they're doing it in school, too. I think they're going to try to coordinate that.
And, and, and there, by the time they get done, there will, there will be enough tiles one way or another.
Oh, I'm sure. Well, yeah. And you can do more than one. So they have said you can do two right now.
They have, they have contingency plans.
That's excellent.
In case, in case people don't show up, they're still going to have their tiles.
Yeah. No, it's a fun one. So it's worth, you know, I don't know, people are always surprised when it gets mentioned. So they act like they haven't heard about it. So it's good to get it out there.
That's a lot of things around here.
Yes. Well, that's a fun one, though, to take kids to. And, you know, I did a tile. So, I mean, it's even fun for adults. So just wanted to mention it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You might just add that there's a really nice rendering of, of that wall on our township DDA website. If people, like you said, if they're not aware of it, they have a very nice rendering of what they propose it might look like. So it's on the township website under the DDA projects.
Other comments? All right. No. Seeing, seeing none, we'll move to the discussion item. And Kyle, I'm going to turn that over to you to give us a little more depth of what you're looking for.
Yes, of course. Thank you. Thank you all for supporting, bringing this up. I do want to acknowledge Mr. Heil's comment of this possibly complicating things. And I thought about that and I've talked to others about it. And I think it, it just helps for people to see that we're looking at everything possible. I know we already are. But part of why I brought this up tonight was, was for folks to see that we're looking at every possible way to, to deal with our bridges. So I'm going to, I'm going to confine my comments to, to the, to the Free Bridge as best as I can tonight, just because I think that makes this discussion a little bit easier. But, you know, we all know where we're at with that. 20 million has been allocated. It's not enough to repair the Free Bridge currently. And, and, you know, with these numbers, as big as they are, they're just, they're just enormous numbers. I think it's hard for, even me, you know, someone that looks at these numbers, thinks about them, to really understand what they mean. But, you know, when we're talking, you know, I think people assume, hey, the state or federal government will come in and save us. But, you know, these are just big enough numbers that they're really hard to, to make it that way. So I'm, I'm honestly racking my brain of, of different things we can do to try to make it easier to maintain the bridges we all rely on to get to and from Groseal. And while I know this is a very hard solution, we'd have to knock on a lot of doors to get some federal regulations, possibly laws changed to make this happen. I think it's worth looking into the possibility of a fixed bridge. And I want to be clear, when I'm talking about that, I'm not saying we, we resolve that, that the Groseal Township Board believes that our bridges should be fixed or anything like that. No, I just, I think a resolution saying, let's look into what it would take for the federal government to change regulations to allow one of these bridges to be fixed. Just because I think that would make maintenance easier, not just in terms of all dollar amounts, but also when you don't have a swinging bridge, you can maintain the bridge without shutting it down, which is another issue that we're having, you know. So that's why I wanted to bring it, bring it up tonight. And, and yeah, if, if it's too early to bring up a resolution, I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, yeah, we're not, I think we have to look into whether that's the proper step to take. There, I, I don't see anything wrong. In fact, we had discussed that, the, the little committee, the Bridge Committee had discussed that. And there's nothing wrong. It's a separate issue from, from us, from Wayne County fixing their bridge, or us possibly buying the toll bridge. It's a totally separate issue, but certainly one that it might be very timely, not only because of the cost of, of those bridges, but also just because of the landscape between the bridges. Are they, you know, the, the big question is, you're also, if they were fixed as they are now, there'd be a lot of pleasure boats that couldn't get in there, maybe even get out.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, and there's a lot, it's, it's a very complicated issue, but I don't see anything wrong with looking into it.
Yeah. I mean, I'd agree with that. I think the, the, there's plenty of cases of fixed bridges all over our country, right? It's just, they're not typically along shipping lanes. So I think we, that would really be the-
That's, that'd be the whole issue.
Right. But I also, I don't think this side of the channel is really used anymore. You know, they, they use Livingston Channel.
But you, I, I think, I think your idea is well-stated. I would just be careful in the sense, if you're taking away the navigability of the Trenton Channel, then you're changing the value of the properties that are currently existing there, that are owned by certain individuals that have a propensity to sue. So I, I would say before we, you know, before we make such a decision, look into and, and talk to some people who are familiar with that, that if you take away the ability for larger boats to go through-
Well, that, and that-
The McLough property would, would no longer be available to be a multi, you know, container-type terminal, which may be in our interest, but the owner of the property may then say that we've done something. So I'm just, again, I'm riffing, just like everybody else, giving a suggestion to think about.
The federal government would, would make the ultimate determination. It's not going to be us. And there's, you know, nothing wrong with asking them, and they'll tell us, they can tell us why they aren't going to allow it.
I guess maybe I should have said, be prepared to be told.
Yeah. And, and as I said, we thought about that, too. Obviously, my thought with that is, nothing wrong with that causeway or fixed bridge, but both our bridges are pretty low. So the, you know, it could be, yeah, we'll go along with the fix, but you're going to have to raise them. You know, which, and that, that's a whole, whole nother complicated story. But there's nothing wrong with starting, talking to them, and, you know, finding out. You know, the, the answer from them might be, no, because we're not, if we change this, we can't change it just for you. It's got to be this, that. But yeah, let's look into it.
And, and you don't make any, you don't make any progress if you don't ask.
That is correct.
Right? The worst thing they can do is say no.
Yep.
So it's worth, I think, Kyle, it's worth exploring every option.
To reflect on what Mr. Heil said, it's not going to be something that is going to be done in a week, a month, a year. When you look at the impact studies that are going to be required, what kind of design goes into it, just putting down a causeway will back up the water and then you'll have a whole different host of issues, certainly along the canal. If you're looking at the county bridge, that water's got to go someplace and you have to have an adequate design for that. But there's going to be impact studies. There's going to be concerns about how you can make this work, the impact on the business. It's going to take years for that to go through the federal government. It's not going to happen overnight.
Yeah. And as I said, it's a completely separate issue from, from the issues we have with those two bridges today. They, that won't impact that at all, because that is down the road.
No bill has his handle.
Nope. No.
Jim, one, oh, I'm sorry.
What? No. You still going? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
I just had a question, though. Just so I was clear on that, Kyle. But didn't the county say any other bridge built after, like, today, has to be non-swing because they won't make them anymore? Didn't the county?
No. In fact, when we were talking with DTE, right now, the big question because of, was it in Minnesota? Oh, no, in Baltimore, wasn't it, the last big accident? That there could be changed down the road as to what types of bridges. There are, but certainly that, that waterway, much different than our waterway. So it's, yeah, there's always a lot of questions with that.
Well, and I, I think a fixed, in terms of a fixed bridge, if it's a non-navigable waterway, you can build it lower.
Right.
But if it's a navigable waterway, you have to build it high.
Higher.
And that affects the costs. So, you know, they, they may say for the time being, I mean, this might come in handy if something happened, you know, in an emergency situation, that they allow it to be fixed. But even, even having it a non-swinging bridge, if it's navigable, you're going to have to accommodate shipping.
Correct. And that's, you know, again, it's not going to be, you know, wouldn't be our call. That'd be up to the core engineer, I believe, are the ones that take care of that.
Derek?
Yes, sir. Just for the public's benefit and just, so I can get this out there. When the free, when the toll bridge was the only operating bridge, when the Free Bridge was down for some 18 months a couple of years ago, there were a number of trustees, I think Mr. Jurecki was actually one of them, that had asked that we petition the U.S. Coast Guard to reduce the frequency or eliminate the toll bridge from opening. So basically, give a preference to vehicular traffic, emergency traffic, because the nature of the opening caused the island to be without basically access. The Coast Guard did provide a little bit of relief, but they did go on record saying, the navigation of the waterway is priority one. Vehicular traffic takes a far backseat to what our priority is. They gave us a slight modification on the opening times, but it was very, very slight. I think what we were asking for was elimination of opening during rush hour. And I think the ability to restrict it if we had an emergency or something like that. And they denied, I think, both of those requests. So-
They gave two an hour as opposed to four.
Something like that.
It was a very, very small window of time.
Very small. So, you know, it is, I will tell you that based upon that experience, it is going to be, number one, a federal decision, and number two, an uphill battle. Because there are laws on the books that go back a long, long ways that dictate, you know, that water, waterway traffic takes priority, number one. So, so, but doesn't mean that you don't look into things. You always look into things. But we have looked at that in the past. And it has come up in situations, recent situations, where the township tried to pursue those things. And that was the result. So.
Totally. And, yeah, and I know it's not the same thing, but I know similar things come up with trains and how the federal government has basically said trains take priority over roads. And that's why we have a lot of the problems we have here. But to, to be clear, well, part of it, what I would want to look into is maybe, I mean, the Coast Guard, that's an administrative thing. So they, they have to operate with the laws that are on the books. So what I'd want to look into is, is maybe, you know, contacting our lawmakers and seeing if there are ways to change the laws for us specifically, just because I think our case is a unique one. And if, if the coal plant was still operating or other things like that were going, this isn't something I think we could ask. But right now, I don't think we have the same kind of freighter traffic that we used to have along the Trenton Channel. And I think it's worth, you know, if it's, if it's one and we're able to keep the navigable waterway in some way, then I think that's, that's one thing that gets at your point, Clerk O'Connor, you know. Just having one bridge be fixed. But if it's easier just to say, hey, this isn't a navigable waterway anymore. And, and easy is, is a difficult word to say. It's like, like Jim has said, this would be a long, long process and ask. But, but yeah, I'm not looking, I'm not looking in the next couple of years, next five years. I'm looking at when the Free Bridge needs to be replaced eventually, which we all know needs to happen, and finding ways to do it for, for cheaper rather than for the amount we're looking at. And so a fixed bridge, I think, would be cheaper if, yeah, if, if it doesn't have to be built so high that allows freighter through, freighters through. So that's something that I just want, I want to start now, because I think we, I think we should, you know. I know, Jim, you're already doing that with some of your conversations, too, and talking about the, the Free Bridge. Yeah.
Kyle, let me, you're going to be available tomorrow. I'll give you a call and update you with what we've got on that. Any other, any, any more discussion on the discussion? If not, we'll move on to the reports. Clerk, Ms., if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. So I asked Deputy Clerk Freel. He said there aren't too many updates. The ballots will be going out forthwith, the absent voter ballots. We are in the process of gearing up for the big onslaught of the four-year November election. We've got our poll inspector team gearing up and training. And, and I think we've gotten the go-ahead from the county that we can actually release some of our voting equipment because there are no recounts in Wayne County. So we are able to move ahead and release some of our containers and things like that and prepare for the next election. But I, I have more fun stuff to focus on today. And I don't do this very often, but I do sit as liaison to the Community Rec Commission. And we have a bunch of really cool events that I want people to start getting excited about. And we are going into the scary political season, so why not have some fun with the scary holiday season. On Friday, October 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., is a Halloween dance for Groseal's 3rd and 5th graders. And so if you have kids or grandkids that fall into that age, at Centennial Farm, we're having a costume contest, prizes. There's pizzas and drinks and DJs. And it'll be at Centennial Farm on Friday, October 18th. And we got some really cute little flyers to go along. And this will also be listed in, in the Groseal Grand. We'll have these events coming out. The very next day, Saturday, October 19th, something, a Fall Harvest Festival. And we're trying something new this year. We're doing a beer tent. We're trying to go a little Oktoberfest, slowly but surely, moving into that fall season. So on Saturday, October 19, we are hosting a Fall Harvest Festival. There will be live music, food trucks, vendors, a beer tent with craft beers, local beers, hayrides, and so much more. And it's only going to be, I think, $5 a person. But then you'll have to kind of pay for your beer and your, but everybody will leave with a pumpkin. So we're hoping that that's going to be good weather and a big hit for Groseal. Then, of course, we take care of our seniors. And we have a Halloween senior bingo luncheon. And this year, it's a free event to our seniors. And it's on Wednesday, October 23rd, from 12 until 2 at Centennial Farm. And the attendance includes lunch, bingo, prizes, raffle baskets, and a lot of fun and conversation for our seniors on the island. And having lost our senior senior earlier this year, I felt it was very important to bring that forward. And then last but not least, we have the Halloween parade on Macomb Street. And that is on Saturday, October 26th, lining up at Groseal High School. The participants will go toward Macomb Street to the VFW. It's sponsoring the real witch wives of Groseal are making another appearance. And of course, afterwards, followed by trick-or-treating down Macomb Street. And I'm sure there will be a lot of other activities up and down the street as they are every year. So these are some fun things to look forward to as unfortunately, the sun goes down a little sooner and it, the weather gets a little cooler. We got to find our way to have some nice times. So, Brian, unless something else has come up, that's the clerk's report for today.
Thank you.
I had a quick question for Uda. Where, is there a list of community events, like just the calendar or the rec depart? I looked on the rec depart website, but I couldn't find it.
It, it is on the township website, on the rec page. It lists the events. And that's where I drew down the flyers. I think it'll also be listed in the grand. And, but yeah, it should be there on the Centennial Farm website under events.
Anything else for Uda? Okay, David?
Thank you. The due date for Groseal summer property taxes is September 14th. But because the 14th falls on a Saturday, payments can be made at Township Hall or in the drop box until Monday, September 16th, without a late- Monday, September 16th, without, uh, a late penalty, and mail postmarked, uh, by September 16th will also be accepted. Beginning September 17th, a 1% per calendar month penalty is added to any unpaid summer taxes, uh, and they can still be paid to Groseal Township until February 28th. After that date, after February 28th of 2025, all unpaid taxes, summer and winter, become delinquent and must be paid to Wayton County with, uh, additional penalties. And to date, we have collected, uh, 34% of the, uh, 2024 summer tax rolls. And, uh, the, I sit on the DPS Commission, uh, we, we're meeting tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock here in the boardroom. And I've just been informed that the Airport Commerce Park Commission will not have a meeting in September. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Uh, trustees reports. Jamison?
All right, good evening. Um, the Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on 24 September if there is a case to hear. We haven't yet heard that there is one. And the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee will meet on 19 September. Um, and this is the last time we'll have to hear about it. The Find Your Way Step, Find Your Way Home Step Up Swim will be this Saturday at Groseal Yacht Club. After-party tickets are still on sale. Um, there's going to be two military aircraft on site, uh, static displays as well as armored vehicles, um, pretty epic event, cool for the community, uh, several news agencies will be covering it. So I'd encourage anybody that's interested to, uh, buy some after-party tickets, show up on Saturday and enjoy the festivities. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jamison. Joe?
Good evening. I sit on the Police Commission. Our meetings are third Tuesday of the month in this room, 7:00 p.m. Just a couple of things I wanted to go over. We are still, unfortunately, we have two officers off, one's on medical and one's on injury, two separate issues. And, um, obviously I am in contact with the police chief and there was a question that came up, I just want to make sure this is clear to the people. I spoke about this a little bit, um, last month in our Township Board meeting, but after our Police Commission meeting, I got a text and was asked this question. So just want to reiterate, um, if you've already heard it, I'm sorry, but it's, it's important that the people know, we're the only department within the township that when people are off, we have to replace. There's a minimum staffing that we have to have to keep Groseal citizens safe and the officers safe. Uh, we don't go below two officers on the road at any time, and what this means is when you have people off on injury or, you know, workers comp or a medical issue, um, that we have to, you have to fill that position, um, including dispatchers. So I just want you to know, the question to me that came up was, you know, if we have people that are injured or off, do we just keep going down in the, in the schedule? And on our, we have four platoons of four people, including the dispatcher, and, uh, no, we don't go down below two people on the road. It's a safety issue. And, you know, I know it bothers Doug because the overtime budget is, I mean, it's getting hammered, I mean, I have to be honest with you, uh, because of this. But again, I have this saying, and I know it's probably not the best saying in the world, but it's a police department, not J.C. Penney. So we have to run it as a police department, and, um, the next board and probably, as I stated before, there's three of us that, um, are running unopposed, so we'll probably be here, the next board, but I'm going to, as a supervisor, I'm going to find the money, there's not going to be an issue. But we've got to keep the people safe. So I wanted this individual to know, they believe that we just go down, 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 and then you might have only one person on the road, how can they do that for Groseal? Well, that's an impossibility. That's not what we do, that's not how we handle it. And once again, um, we're going to come up with it somehow, and, uh, your safety obviously is number one. The safety of the officers is in there too, but the people that come, visit and live on Groseal, um, and it's the only department, as I stated, the fire department, I checked with Derek here, the, you know, the DPS, the airport, if they go down one, they go down one unfortunately. Um, but we have to replace for everyone's benefit. So I just want people to know that, uh, I wanted to reiterate that, um, just to make sure, uh, because we keep talking about the officers who are off. And that is it, Jim, I'm set, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Kyle?
A question, are the officers doing okay, Joe?
Yeah, they're doing okay. It just, it, it, I don't want to get too far into it, but, um, it, it's really frustrating, that's all. It's frustrating when, and they can't help it, when I was the chief, I had three off at one time, and I crushed the overtime budget. I absolutely crushed it, and I had no choice. I mean, it is what it is, we had to, um, as I stated, the, it is the people that are the number one concern in their safety, and that's the way it's going to stay, so, um, but I can't tell you, Kyle, how we're hoping at least one fairly soon, but, you know, we're not the doctors, you know what I mean? So, and I can't, I can't get too far into it, but that's how that works.
Kyle?
Um, yeah, no, thank you, thank you, Joe. Obviously, I, I think all of our thoughts are with them and, and hope that they get well soon. Um, you know, grateful for, for what, what the whole police department does for all of us. So yes, I sit on the Planning Commission, which needs, meets on an as-needed basis. Um, there is no plan currently to meet, but I, I do want to say here that I am trying to get the Planning Commission back together at least one, one more time, um, to discuss something that you've all heard me talk about a lot, R1E. Um, I do have, we have an open, I think, ZBA, um, uh, case that I, I, I voted down trying to get R1E, uh, forward, and, uh, you know, I think we have, uh, made some progress. I tried to move it in the Planning Commission, they were asked for some information, I think we did get the information we need, so now it's just a matter of getting this, everyone on schedule to be able to talk about it. And, and to be clear, I'm not talking about a, a major tweak to R1E, it's, uh, just a possible exception for one lot here or there, is what I think we should discuss. Um, there is an argument to say, hey, wait till after the master plan, but again, I just, I just want to, want to do it, because I think it's something we should talk about, and there, there are countless examples like that, I believe, in our zoning code of small things we can tweak to make things easier for us, uh, that, you know, are just hard to do. So I know that, I feel like this one's a good one, I want to try to, try to advocate for it. If the Planning Commission shoots it down or the board shoots it down, I'm open to that, but I just, that's something that I want the board to look out for, um, before, uh, in, in the coming month or so. Um, I do want to speak a little bit on, on Fresh Start, uh, and of course, we'll be careful in, in how I speak about it, but, uh, I think the public likely knows that, um, there was a, a, a stay on our enforcement, uh, because they had a retreat scheduled, um, but they requested an injunction, uh, which the judge did not grant. Um, so for me, you know, obviously the case is still being heard, but to me, that suggests good news, that the judge doesn't see that they have merit necessarily in what they're asking for, um, and I did want to, want to update folks on that. Overall, um, I think folks know, they're, they're monitoring social media very closely, what residents are saying very closely. Uh, I've seen people be a lot, I mean, in general, I think everyone's been very careful about what they're saying, but, um, I think it's just something that, that we got to be looking out for and, and watching out for, and, and overall, I think we're, uh, you know, I, I'll continue to say it, I'm, I'm proud of the way the township handled this. Uh, I think it was done well, um, just as any, any cases handled before the township, so I'm glad that, uh, at least the initial, uh, suggestions before the, the judge, uh, suggest that too. So, um, that's, uh, Fresh Start and, uh, and R1E. Uh, I do want to, uh, speak a little bit on a personal note, um, this evening, um, a little bit of a sad note, um, and it's, uh, basically about my brother-in-law. Uh, my brother-in-law passed away, uh, about a week ago. Um, I, I don't believe in using eulogies to mince words, I want to be very clear, he's, he, uh, had an issue with alcohol and he passed away from liver cirrhosis, and it was a really sad thing for our family. Um, but the reason I, I wanted to bring it up tonight is, you know, he, he, he moved here to Groseal about seven or eight years ago to be, uh, closer to my wife and, and our aunt, and, um, and, uh, he moved here partly hoping that we could, you know, I, I was hoping we could help him out, and we did, we helped him out a little bit and, um, but you know, he, he had a rough go of it, and, uh, um, and his first few years here, he, he wasn't happy, he wanted to leave. Uh, he lived with us first, and then he, he bought a house on Bellevue and, uh, and even wasn't happy there. Um, but, uh, he, over time, I think actually what changed him and what made him wanting to stay here was, was the neighbors. The, the neighbors started reaching out to him, helping him out, bringing him food, things like that, you know, he, he was very sick towards the end and didn't like people seeing him, I think, with what he was going through. Um, but I, I think it speaks to, 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 to what this community is, you know, um, that, um, you know, he was in a, in a very small house in Bellevue that he did fix up, made it look nice, which I was really proud of, um, and it was neighbors that he hadn't known before that I think turned things around for him and, and made him want to stay, and I think made, made his last few years very happy here. So, you know, I think that speaks to Groseal and what an amazing community it is. And I also just want to speak, uh, to when the neighbor found him passed away, the, the police and animal control and everyone was just so, so great, you know, and, uh, I know we all speak about this and, and how amazing first responders here are on Groseal, but it's just, you know, I just want to echo that experience, you know, the police are very sensitive. Uh, animal control took, uh, my brother-in-law's dog, had him for a week, um, until we found a family member that was able to take him, um, and, and yeah, just made a process that's difficult for any family much, much easier. So, um, again, grateful, grateful to Groseal, uh, what a community it is for all of us, and, uh, um, and, and again, I, I just, another example of why, why I'm, I'm grateful to be here, um, and, uh, and why, why, uh, yeah, well, I think why a lot of us like being here, and, and, uh, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you for sharing that. Carl?
I have several matters. Um, number one, Kyle, my condolences to you and your family. Very, very difficult thing, and I'm, my heart goes out to you. Uh, I have the pleasure of sitting on the Fire Commission. Our next meeting is going to be Thursday, September 12th at 5:00 p.m. in this room. That is a different, uh, from the norm, we have been using 6:00 p.m. We're going to experiment with 5:00 p.m., uh, going forward. So this Thursday, September 12th at 5:00 p.m. in the Merle Solomon Room. Please come on down and join us. Uh, it is a very short meeting. Kurt Kobelak is the chair, manages to do an awful lot of business in a very short amount of time, or if you can catch us on, uh, television, don't leave the room for more than five minutes because you'll miss it, he really is that good. Uh, second thing is I have the pleasure of sitting on the Greenways Open Space Commission, Committee. Um, you will note that there have been, uh, concrete pads poured and benches put at the very corner of East River, I'm sorry, East River where the Meridian Trail, um, comes through. We have a bench and a pad there, the pad was, um, poured over this last couple of days. Um, same thing with, uh, the Fury Gage Trail at the Fury Trail, the southern end, we have a pad and a bench there, so you can sit back and, uh, just enjoy the woods, enjoy the surrounding. If you haven't been to the overlook on the canal, which is on, uh, Meridian just south of Lowry, uh, Enzo Bonomo, uh, did a great job with it, and it has been described as one of the most tranquil, peaceful places on Groseal. If you get a chance, go down there, take a book and just soak in some nature, it's so peaceful and quiet. Uh, the next thing is we do have Dump the Junk that is scheduled for Saturday, October 19th between 9:00 and 4:00, again, at the DPS Yard on Grow Road. Uh, we're going to have more details and, uh, postings on, uh, the Groseal, uh, website, and, uh, there's a list of items you can bring, most importantly, a list of items that you cannot bring, but follow it. Take a look at the, uh, site and it'll give you an idea what you can do. Um, we ask people to, um, come there, and if they're going to look for treasure, you might find something that you like, um, but, uh, a lot of people bring stuff, uh, that we are able to repurpose through various, uh, agencies, and I consider if you have anything there that you want to bring that, uh, is junk, bring it in. Uh, we'll, we've had previously 15 dumpsters, and we've also had an awful lot of material that is going into, um, being repurposed with various shelters and groups like that. Uh, lastly, I am pleased to announce that, uh, we have organized a meeting between the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, the Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy, the Rec Committee, Rec Commission, and Greenways Open Space, where the, um, principals are going to try and sit down and see what community of interest we have, where we can help each other, and what we can do to make Groseal a better place by supporting each other. Um, as an example, with, uh, Enzo's, um, project, the bicycle path is on the east side of Meridian. Uh, Brian Pollock and Bicycle Pedestrian have special expertise in, uh, the kinds of crosswalks that are necessary to help make it a safe transition, so you can go down there from the bicycle path. Uh, we also have, uh, interest in perhaps, uh, more communications regarding use of, uh, pesticides, herbicides, what that does to the surrounding community and the waters that inevitably seem to creep into. So we're going to be meeting on that, that is, uh, scheduled, uh, tentatively for the end of the month, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Carl. Derek?
Uh, good evening. I have a few items, uh, this evening, uh, first being, um, on the date of the Dump the Junk event, which is October 19th, uh, that trustee Bletcher had mentioned earlier, Rotary will be hosting a shred event that same day, uh, in the morning, they'll be located right near the entrance to the DPS garage, um, the same area where the Dump the Junk, Junk event, uh, occurs. Um, they accept small donations, uh, for the use of that service, but, uh, please take advantage of that, uh, it'd be very convenient right there near the entrance to the yard. Um, as, um, I'm sure the supervisor will probably address this, but September 18th is the next public meeting at 6 o'clock regarding the, uh, toll bridge, uh, proposal. Um, Community Development is in the process of, um, transi- transitioning over to electronic permitting, um, so that system is now up and running, uh, at that department, so, uh, you should be able to go online and pull, uh, permits. Um, that's something that we initiated a couple of months ago, um, and is now, uh, in its, um, final implementation, so, uh, feel free to utilize that and provide feedback to Community Development about your experience. Uh, hopefully that'll make it easier for, uh, applying for permits. Um, and then last, um, we have been getting a number of complaints in the Community Development Department about, um, especially new residents coming to the island and not being aware of the, uh, protected tree ordinance. Uh, so the township has an ordinance on the books that, um, any tree over eight inches in diameter at chest height is considered to be a protected tree. Um, residents are only allowed to remove two protected trees, uh, within a 12-month period, unless there's some extenuating circumstance, like the tree is a hazard to your home, is diseased or dying or something along those lines. Um, we, uh, often have contractors that violate this, uh, working for homeowners, so Community Development will be working to help to educate contractors, um, but I think where we see this a lot is new homeowners that aren't aware of that ordinance, and then we end up getting called, and by the time that occurs, it's already too late. Um, so we're going to do our best to get the word out to the residents, but, um, if you do see that type of activity occurring, where you expect that maybe there's a violation, feel free to call us and we'll try to utilize that as an educational opportunity for that resident. Um, so, uh, with that, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Uh, yeah, I'll just follow up on what, uh, Derek mentioned, uh, September 18th, uh, which is next Wednesday, right? Uh, 6 o'clock here in the boardroom, uh, our next, uh, information meeting on, uh, on, the toll bridge. Uh, then we have one more after that on October 9th. We also will have, uh, a special section in the October Groseal Grand, uh, dealing with the toll bridge. So, uh, there really shouldn't be anybody out there, uh, that doesn't know what's going on about the toll bridge, and that's, uh, that's what we're, we're hoping to accomplish is to educate, uh, the, the people of Groseal, uh, on that issue. Uh, and that is all I have, so I would entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.